This meeting of the North Andover Board of Selectmen on April 27, 2015. We're going to start by the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we have, from Weeblo Troops 86 and 87, we have Drew Faniff, Aaron Connolly, Riley Horn, Colin Horn, and Michael Tringle. And from Troop 79, Derek Neely. So come on up, guys, and lead us in that pledge. If you guys could just come right up front here. Right up front.
It's true golly.
Tiffany.
True golly.
He corrected. It's true golly.
Flag behind you.
This way, hon.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, see, let's see. Does anyone want to take a picture in front of the board here? (inaudible).
Which one is Colin? Not only your cousin, so was that lady.
Oh, the poor thing. She might be in the future.
Okay, Aaron, turn around. I can get a picture done.
It's a tough crowd.
Oh, wait, I like you.
All right, there you go.
One more question.
Oh, one more.
Kind of slide out of the picture. I want to get a block.
All right. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a question from the -- why don't you go right up over to that -- go up right behind that microphone and ask the question.
I can't believe she asked that.
Okay, so this is Drew, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Drew has a question.
I was wonder -- oh, wait, is this thing on?
Yeah, that's on.
Okay. I was wondering if you could move the civil, like, the soldier statue that used -- where the old police station used to be to Patriots Park, because that is a more rightful place for it.
Well, I know we've discussed it in the past, so you're right on topic. I don't know where we are with that, but we will certainly try to find out. We haven't asked the manager segment every other meeting, or every meeting, which is every two weeks. So if you could --
Every 15th meeting.
If you could submit that question to him, and we'll try to get the status of that and where that's at. I'm not quite sure the logistics. In other words, I don't know what has to happen to be able to get that move to occur, because the statue's been there for a long time, and there are a lot of people who like it there. And then, of course, there are other people like you who might like to see it moved. So we have to really discuss that and understand what is involved with moving a statue that has been there for as long as it has been to a new location. But I think that's a really good idea, and I think that's something that we should certainly discuss in more detail. But thank you.
I'm with you.
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody else have any comments on that?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, you guys are welcome to stay for a few more minutes. We're going to have a proclamation right now that I think would be important for you guys to hear. So, oh, okay, first of all, let's do the approval of the minutes from our April 14 meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes from April 14, 2015, open session, as written.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Everybody find them okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Okay, we're going to move to communications and announcements. The first, under communications announcement, is a proclamation. We are proclaiming or recognizing the Armenian genocide that occurred on April 24, 1915. And Rosemary will -- because my voice is not great tonight, Rosemary, as the clerk, will be reading the proclamation.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome. Now, who will be accepting the proclamation? Okay, Father, if you want to stand next to me? And whoever? Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. Whereas, on the night of April 24, 1915, more than 200 leaders in the Armenian community in the city known today as Istanbul were arrested and sent to prison. Most were executed, beginning a horrible systematic killing and forced relocation of the Armenian people that would last until May 28, 1918. During these years, the government of the Ottoman Empire claimed the lives of 1.5 million Armenians and forced 500,000 more from their homeland. The Armenian genocide was a terrible breach of human rights and an event that has outraged the world. And whereas the -- aristocracy -- wait, I can't say this. Atrocities, knowing it, and I'm not saying it correctly, carried out against the Armenian people were grave and unimaginable, as they were subjected to deportation, abduction, torture, starvation, and more. And as with any violent conflict, Armenian women and children suffered the worst abuses. The bulk of the Armenian population that was displaced from their homes was forced to escape to neighboring as well as faraway countries. And whereas many fled to the United States and enriched the American heritage with their culture, education, arts, and sciences. And whereas April 24, 2015 marked as the centennial commemoration of the start of a persecution of the Armenian people, the commemoration of this terrible blight on humanity at the hands of the Ottoman Empire serves to remind free people everywhere that peace and freedom from oppression should not be accepted in a casual manner, but rather we should all give thanks for the martyrs who have gone before, who gave their lives, that their culture and heritage would survive and be part of a foundation for a better society. Now therefore, in memory of the Armenians who perished during the Armenian genocide, the North Andover Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim April 28, 2015 as a day of remembrance for the Armenians who suffered at the hands of the Ottoman Empire, and urge all our citizens to pay tribute to the memory of those who gave their lives in the cause of religious freedom. And this is presented to you by the North Andover Board of Selectmen. Richard Valancourt, I presenting on his behalf.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something on behalf of this committee? I understand that the -- this committee, on behalf of St. Croesus Armenian Church, requested a flag to be flown during the week of April 24, and we fully understand that it just wouldn't work out because of your setup. But may I ask if we have a photo presentation with you and the priest and Drew?
Sure.
And we'll -- this is the Armenian flag.
Next, we're going to be moving on to an award for the excellence in financial reporting for FY14. I'm going to give everybody a minute to file out if they would like. I know this is probably going to be a huge exeris.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks. Thanks for coming in tonight. Thank you.
We both have a back. We both have a back. Okay. Thank you for all who stayed, and we'll continue now with our open meeting. So the next is, we would like to recognize a certificate of achievement for excellence in our finance reporting for the town for FY14. Mr. Manager?
Sure. First of all, I want to recognize the person most important to receiving this recognition, and that's Lynn Savage, who's not here this evening, but on a daily basis, provides really tremendous financial insight, makes sure that we have financial statements that the board certainly appreciates in terms of the depth of the financial reporting, that what we do is supported by strong audit standards, and that this particular recognition, we worked with the Government Finance Officers Association beginning three fiscal years ago to raise the standard of financial reporting to reach national recognition, not unlike we have with the budget now for four years. So every year, we're going to move forward with making sure we meet that high standard. We think it's important to the residents of the community, and certainly Lynn Savage is the person most responsible for receiving this achievement.
Again, this is an excellent achievement that just continues to show the great efforts that paid for in that office. And if I heard you right, this was the first year that this particular award was --
This is the third year.
Third year for this award, okay. And again, you know, it just keeps towards the transparency and the understanding that we have in the town, so thank you. Any other comments?
Congratulations again. It's terrific. Absolutely. Congratulations again. I see Lynn every morning, and I saw her this morning, and I forgot to. Bravo. There's always tomorrow.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Mr. Manager. Next, we are going to recognize Derek Neely from Troop 79 for his Eagle Scout project. And I believe we have Mr. Gorman in here tonight to tell us about it.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to be presenting on Stevens Pond, but prior to that, we wanted to recognize Derek Neely. Derek, I've actually known since he was probably about Drew's age, and he's become a fine young man. And as he's grown up in the Boy Scout organization, he had to perform his Eagle Scout project, and our department has been recipient of a number of Eagle Scout projects, which have been great. And this year, he built two beautiful lifeguard chairs that will be put down at Stevens Pond when we reopen. Right now, they're at the front of the youth center if you'd like to see them, but probably the most sturdiest-built lifeguard chair I've ever seen in my life. So his project was obviously approved by our department, and then the entire Boy Scout organization. He got all the approvals, got all the donated supplies, and obviously, his craftsmanship is pretty impressive. Derek's graduating from North Andover High School this year and is going to be studying engineering at Merrimack College next year. And it was our wish that the Board of Selectmen would recognize him for his volunteer efforts in helping us to continue to improve Stevens Pond. So Derek Neely.
Thank you for considering the youth services as the recipient for your project. I think that was great on your part to do that. And we do have a -- not a proclamation, but a certificate of recognition for you that the clerk will read into the record. So you can join her.
It's a certificate of recognition presented to Derek Neely in recognition of completing your Eagle Scout project by designing and constructing two new lifeguard chairs and donating them through the town for use at Stevens Pond. Your leadership, dedication, and hard work in making these improvements to Stevens Pond are greatly appreciated. Thank you for your community service on behalf of the Town of North Andover, and this is presented to you by the North Andover Board of Selectmen from Chair Richard Valancourt. And congratulations on completing your Eagle project. That's a big deal. As you know, it's a big deal. And then, what else? Those gray chairs give the height, so it could maybe save somebody's life, so congratulations.
Thank you, Derek. And don't leave yet, because we still have to accept those chairs in. You've got -- you're actually on the agenda quite a few times tonight, so we're going to keep you here for a few more minutes, anyway. Next on the agenda is to review and approve the meeting, I guess we're going to have to approve them, but just to review the remaining meeting schedule for May through December. So --
There might be an Eric for December. November 30 and December 7 is one week the next week, so it's two weeks in a row. So you might want to make that December 14 and December 28.
I think the only question would be, and we can leave those, because we can change them if they come up later on. Typically, what happens is if we get to the week after Christmas, that's a particularly complicated week for most of us. So it's not uncommon at that time. We can change the time. We can hold this. We can go to the 14th, but typically, we have to worry about the annual relicensing process, and we'll almost never meet in that last week in December. So at some point in December, I think last year as well, we met two consecutive weeks. So the question would be whether we go 14 and 21.
21 is a really tough one.
That's a tough one, too, yeah.
That week of Christmas.
That week of Christmas is tough. So we may just go -- we may go 30 to the 14, and then see what happens going into the first week in January.
Plus, we have the tax classification.
Yeah, which we're -- we'll always shoot for the 30th, but that's -- actually, I have been -- for any number of reasons, may hold the dates provided, because the tax classification, if it doesn't happen by the November 30 meeting, you don't want it at the 14th meeting. It's too late for tax bills. So that seventh meeting may be a helpful meeting to have. And then, if necessary, you go to the 14. So I proceed with what's here, and then we'll see how the year rolls out.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Let's proceed with what we have, and if we have to make adjustments along the way, we'll do that. I don't believe we have to take a vote on this. This is just for information only, and so we can publish at the appropriate time.
Yes.
So any other comments from the board? If you want any chance to review them and okay with them? Everything looks good right now, right? Six months out, everything looks good?
June 15, I won't be here. That's just --
June 15?
Yeah, I shot you an email earlier, just so that you know I'm not going to be skipping it on the fly.
Okay.
I have a work obligation that night that I can't.
It's one night obligation?
Oh, yeah, just the June, Monday, June 15.
All right, well, we've got time to discuss that, if we have to reschedule that meeting. But let's keep it the way it is now, and if we can, we'll discuss rescheduling it so that we can have an opportunity to attend.
Just for the sake of knowing, does anybody have a conflict on the 22nd of June? I'm not suggesting changing it right now, but if it comes up as the next days progress...
No.
Doesn't sound -- okay, so we'll -- just something to keep in mind if in the next week or 10 days, or I'm off by a month, and the next month or so, there's some decision that you want to move it back to the 22nd, may provide some flexibility.
Okay. So let's leave it the way it is for now, and then we'll discuss that. We'll allow people to check their calendars and see if there's anything significant on that date that we can't have it. If we can, we'll try to move it to --
Just one in July, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And Phil, just for your knowledge, and you probably already know this, but if there isn't a -- if you do have a conflict going on, let's, you know, try to make sure that we arrange it, and we'll work on it.
I expect for Tuesday we have to.
Right.
I mean, I think the history of the board is to really get us all here, so.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, did you have?
No.
Okay. Okay, so next, oh, no, we're still in the communications announcements. So the next, I have one announcement. The Prestash Awards, this Thursday night, the Prestash Awards recognize volunteers who volunteer in our school systems. And there's three outstanding recipients this year. It's this Thursday night, I believe tickets are still available. It's held at the North Andover Country Club. It's a cocktail reception from 6 to 9, and the tickets are $35 per person, and they can be purchased at Rose &amp; Dove on 125 North Andover. I don't know if I can ask the winners. I'm not going to do that, but...
Well, they know.
Oh, they do. Oh, good, because I don't know all of them offhand, so I know a couple, but I'm not sure of all of them. I don't want to leave anybody out. But that would be, that's a great event, if anyone wants to get some tickets to go to that. Okay, any other communications or announcements?
The town meeting warrant has been printed and is available at the clerk's office and will be available, if not now, within the next 24 hours online.
The town meeting is Tuesday, May 19 at 7:00 PM at North Andover High School. Be there or be square.
Must be get a great turnout. Okay, any other communications announcements?
No.
Okay, let's move on to the consent items. First on the agenda is to accept the donation from Derek Neely for two lifeguard chairs for Stevens Pond. We already talked about it, so do we have a --
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Thank you again for doing that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is event requests. There are two. One for the Museum of Science, uh, Museum of Printing, to close Massachusetts Avenue in front of the museum on June 21st from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM for the annual printing arts fair. Any discussion?
Can I just comment on something that Laurie's introduced, which is these cover sheets which summarize the responses and recognize the good work in Laurie and come up with ways that allow us to navigate through a couple hundred-page agenda a little more.
I noticed it right away, because I use the paper. I liked it quite a bit.
Well, we get the green inside the, digitally, so it's just as good.
I loved it.
Although I didn't realize what the green wasn't, you just said that. I was like, why is some of these green and some aren't?
We ran out of paper.
But thank you.
Because pink was on.
Okay.
That's next meeting. You can use pink.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're all set with that one. And the next is the neurofibrosis, neurofibromatosis northeast to use the streets of North Andover for the fifth annual Coast to the Cure Bike Ride on September 12, 2015. Is there anybody here? Come on up.
Neurofibromatosis.
Thank you.
My name's Diana Playive. I'm the Director of Special Events for Neurofibromatosis Northeast.
Okay. Okay, so I think the only thing that I saw in the package was that Lieutenant Gray would request that when the first set of bikes returned to town, that the police would have a notification so that they can ensure a presence to try to slow the traffic down a bit. So if that, if that logistically can be handled, I think --
Yeah, we can absolutely do that, and I have the phone number already.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Stevens Pond update and the 2015 fees. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you again. This is our annual meeting to discuss the fees for Stevens Pond. We've been doing this for a number of years now, and you have a package which kind of explains, obviously, our continued, some of our accomplishments down there. A few other things that will be taking place prior to opening this year is we'll be working with the trustees of the reservation. They're actually doing a walking path, which is actually going to cut in front of Stevens Pond. So we'll be moving the fence actually a little bit back so that they can actually walk through, and then it goes on to the fire road up to Wire Hill. That work is all being done next week, so it'll be done before we get open. The moving of the fence does not affect any of our parking or anything, and I think it's really good. They wanted to kind of go through it, but because our Stevens Pond is locked in the off-season, this was the best thing, and it looks, we passed all the boards and everything. And so that's something that'll take place, and then obviously, our normal cleanup that we take place with volunteers, as well as a DPW in May. And then we get ready to go in June. So as of May 1st, we'd like to be able to offer permits, and the board sets the fees every year. We have been at the same fee for a number of years, and some members of the board are pretty passionate about keeping it as affordable as we possibly can. If you have seen, and I got your email, Phil, you had some questions on some of the things. So a little bit of history in terms of that the revenues are a little bit down the last couple of years, and biggest part is the blue-green algae issue we had two years ago. And that, I think, was a big reason we didn't sell as many permits last year. I think there's still a failing, is there blue-green algae in Stevens Pond. And I'm happy to report with the weekly testing that we had no signs of blue-green algae at all last year. And we actually only had to close one day for high E coli reading, which makes the best in Stevens Pond history that I've been around, that we've only been able to have to close for one day. So we've got a clean pond, and things are going well. I do see that people are going to start to come back a little bit more. A couple of our biggest years prior to that was a failing of a lot of our residents, that it was cheaper to kind of stay home a little bit for some beaching experience, and, you know, I think those were those two high years you saw in the past history. So we've been, actually, a $75 family permit fee is something that we've been living with for a few years. We have increased the guest pass, and all the other fees have been staying the same. So in your package, you'll see that to kind of, you know, shorten that little gap a little bit, it was my recommendation that we increase the fees a little bit, and obviously, the board has the ultimate say, whether we do that or we keep it the way it is. Again, I think Stevens Pond is an outstanding resource to our community. The swimming lessons itself are great, and great for price that we offer here in North Andover Swimming Lessons. And, you know, we've done so much work down there with the rehabbing of the building, the weed removal, the beach sand, the parking lot being done over, and the landscaping. It's pretty sharp down there, and we want to continue to do that. So I'll turn it back to you guys in terms of questions, and we need to set the fees tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we keep the fees at their present rate. It's a wonderful resource. It's a quality-of-life issue for the citizens of North Andover. And again, I think some families are still struggling with the economy, and I'd like to keep them the same.
So we have a motion and a second discussion?
My only discussion would be, can we pull off keeping them where they are? Because you know we like to keep them low. But I also take your recommendations seriously.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things is, you know, Andrew and past town managers have had me take a look at, all right, this is what the selectmen's wanted, what would the fee increase be to maybe make us, you know, close that gap a little bit? The town has committed a certain amount of money every year to Stevens Pond, and we...
Like, I don't want to see any gate attendants go away. I don't want to see any lifeguards go away if we don't raise that.
We're stuck in the lifeguards. We have the minimum amount of staffing that you have to have by law. The gate attendance is only one gate attendant on at a time, so I don't see any shortfalls. Again, I don't see our shortfall as huge either. I think it's something that, again, the town has to decide whether they want to take a little bit of a loss every year. I'm very optimistic that our numbers are going to be up this year.
I am, too.
I think people want to see one year of this post-blue-green-algae situation.
Yeah. I just don't want any kids to lose their job. That's kind of where I'm getting at.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. We just spent a million and a half dollars on snow, so you're going to raise the rates to gain another couple thousand? I come back from the era when this was free, so...
When it was free. Wasn't that long ago.
But you've done a terrific job. It really is terrific. It's just come such a long way.
It's really, it's really nice down there. We've talked about possibly using it in other seasons also. We had the, over Christmas, we had the little polar plunge down there one day, and I think there's some opportunities for some growth with some stuff there. I do think it's still one of our cherished things in town here that a lot of people still don't know about. We're going to continue to do a better job improving our marketing, you know, getting some of those young families who aren't familiar with Stevens Pond and didn't know that Dawn learned to swim there and everything.
I think we all learned. We all are just...
Right. So I'm fine with whatever you decide.
We used to be able to pop the level services.
Correct. Yeah, we won't, we won't cut services.
Okay. So we have a motion for to keep the fees as they were in 2014 and not raise them up $10 and $5? We have a second by Mr. Stewart. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And thank you for all the work you do.
Just a quick announcement also going along with this. Andrew has just signed off on our contracts. We, once again, will have our children's shows on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the Common and our Sunday night concert series on the Common. We're very excited. We have some new acts coming, both on the children's side and the adult concert series, too. So again, great use of the Common during the summer also, so thank you.
So men and tuxes are coming back, though, right?
They are. They are. Were you the one that recommended them?
No, they're all, I just remember they're there every year.
Every year? One of Bill McAvoy's favorites.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Request by Community Development to waive permit fees for machine shop village signs.
So moved.
I saw, okay, I saw Jean in right here. Jean, did you have, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion. I want a second, but Mr. Dilly, any discussion?
No. They're beautiful.
Very nice, yes.
Very exciting.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I take that opportunity to comment on the new leadership of the Community and Economic Development Department sitting at the back room, both Eric and Jean, and I see a member of our planning board here as well. But I just want to recognize that the efforts they've made in the last couple of months
some of those young families who aren't familiar with Stevens Pond and didn't know that Dawn learned to swim there and everything.
I think we all learned.
We all are just...
Right. So I'm fine with whatever you decide.
At the current... We used to be able to pop the level services.
Correct. Yeah, we won't, we won't cut services.
Okay. So we, we have a motion for to keep the fees as they were in 2014 and not raise them up $10 and $5? We have a second by Mr. Stewart. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And thank you for all the work you do.
Just a quick announcement also going along with this. Andrew has just signed off on our contracts. We, we, once again, will have our children's shows on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the Common and our Sunday night concert series on the Common. We're very excited. We have some new acts coming, both on the children's side and the adult concert series too. So again, great use of the Common during the summer also, so, thank you.
So men and tuxes are coming back though, right?
They are.
All right.
They are. Were you the one that recommended it?
No, they're, they, I just remember they're there every year.
Every year? One of Bill McAvoy's favorites.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Request by community development to waive permit fees for machine shop village signs.
So moved.
I saw, okay. I saw Gene in right here. Gene, did you, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion. I was, one second, Mr. Dilly, any discussion?
No.
They're beautiful.
Very nice, yes.
Very exciting.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I take that opportunity to comment on the new leadership of the Community and Economic Development Department sitting at the back room, both Eric and Gene, and I see a member of our planning board here as well? But I just, I want to recognize that the efforts they've made in the last couple of months making a difficult transition, as all division transitions are, and they're doing a fantastic job there, and this is a small piece of that, but there's a lot of positive things happening out of the department. So it's a good opportunity to recognize those folks.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have two affordable units that are coming up for resale. The board has the right of first refusal to purchase these for the affordable housing stock in North Andover. Do I have a motion on these two?
Move that the Board of Selectmen decline the right of first refusal to purchase the affordable housing unit at 200 Shikering Road, Unit 203B.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Move that the Board of Selectmen decline the right of first refusal to purchase the affordable housing unit at 7 Sider Press Way, Meeting House Commons.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we've waived the right to purchase those units. Next on the agenda, we will be providing recommendations for the zoning articles that will be presented at town meeting. I think we have five or six zoning articles to be presented. Do we have someone that's going to speak to them? Who's going to speak to them? Come on up, Gene.
So there are four zoning articles, the first of which is the most comprehensive of Article Nine in the warrant. The downtown overlay was established in 2009. The downtown itself is comprised of four underlying zoning districts, and what the downtown overlay did was combine the uses within those underlying districts and put them into an overlay. Therefore, as development is to occur in the downtown, if a developer opts to use one of the allowed uses within the overlay, but not necessarily within their own underlying district, we can then create some design guidelines. So we created them to try to promote better development on Main Street and some of the adjacent streets. Given that, what Article Nine proposes to do is to amend that downtown overlay by converting and extending a certain portion of it and creating a sub-district. It's Subdistrict A Historic Mill Area within the downtown overlay. Okay, so the sub-district is created really of the four parcels comprised of the two parcels that have the existing mills, and then adjacent to those two parcels is the parcel that has the parking deck today and directly across from that, which is largely a vast parking lot area. Those two parcels today are not within the downtown overlay, so this proposal does look to bring them into Subdistrict A. The reason for creating it is the overlay site design guidelines, the intensity of use criteria, the building height, the setback requirements of the downtown existing overlay doesn't necessarily really fit in with the complexity of these mill buildings, the size of the parcels, the, the scale and configurations of the buildings. So this sub-district really sets different parameters in terms of the design guidelines, but, and it allows for different setback criteria, configuration of the property as we foresee it to be built out in the somewhat undeveloped parcels that exist. So the amended overlay, overlay will allow some flexibility in design to promote the economic viability of the sub-district area, but it still promotes many of the design elements in the downtown and the existing buildings to ensure that it's a cohesive build-out. It'll really be an anchor to the downtown the way we see it. The proposal allows for a diverse mix of residential, business, office use, entertainment use, amongst other uses. So it, it's intended to be a real diverse development that will be, you know, not just nine to five. It's going to be a mix of uses that will really be a destination point. It allows for that to be constructed. Restrictions with regard to setbacks for the residential neighborhood that surrounds those two somewhat vacant parcels now and building height step downs have been incorporated to make sure that the, the development fits into the neighborhood. The planning board has had their public hearing. We had Warner Butter speak at that public hearing, really voiced concern around traffic and both existing today as well as what will it look like. Site plan review will always take into consideration the traffic component, so we acknowledge that the High Street, we've heard comments related to High Street Elm intersection, High Street Prescott, and also the right-of-way coming out of Sutton Pond as it intersects with High Street as well, so...
And what was the, what was the planning board's recommendation on this? Oh, actually, it was in here, isn't it?
Okay, the planning board approved it. Lynn Reddick, for the planning board. As you remember, last year, we did vote at town meeting. We gave pretty broad variables so West Mill could go along and get tenants in the space. We're actually pulling that back because that applied to the whole downtown overlay, and we wanted it to be temporary, so we had time. We started working on, Gene took the lead on this and started working on it last September, October, and it's taken us, we're still making minor, minor changes now, but we've been working on it steadily for the past six months. So with the developer and everything like that, we've gotten a lot more concessions to make sure that it fits in with the neighborhoods, you know, down on High Street, they could develop back to the back of Meadowview pretty much, but they take, you know, that parking garage may not hopefully exist. It may, you know, and have a better economic, you know, development there. But, you know, so they've made step downs and concessions and everything like that because they want it to be a neighborhood. They want it to fit in with the surrounding. And so we're taking back the broad powers that were put in for last year with the planning board to allow concessions on the whole downtown and got improved on the downtown overlay with the Subdistrict A for this area. And we think we have a really good, you know, product, and the developers happy, we're happy, so I think it's, it'll be good for the economic development of that property. So hopefully, they'll get it filled pretty quick.
How do we want to take these? First of all, are there any questions from the board before we move?
Yes, I'm going to speak to them.
Good question. Is there anyone here wanting to speak for this article?
I have one question.
Do you know if they have any plans down here for unloading vehicles?
Unloading vehicles?
Yeah, they have delivery trucks that block the road every single day.
On which side, you know?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, they're on both sides. Well, on the west side, they're going to bring parking into the site, and they're actually going to change, they have delivery problems on the back where Osgood Pond is, and I know they're going to change some configurations there, and that should save problems. The West Mill has no parking. That's really, you have the buildings which are partially undergrade, which to get to parking, they either have to go up these sets, two flights of stairs, and across the street to their parking lot on water, or they have to go all the way down the hill. So they're going to be opening up, taking down the building, which, and putting parking in that center area?
When it, when it comes to that, the drop-off of the big trucks, would they consider removing that bump out if it's down on the right and use that for unloading?
What would be the bump out in front of Jamie's that is referring to?
Okay, the bump out on Jamie's side.
They make a lot of safer, I don't know, but right now, it's, it's hard to go by when there's a truck that's...
I know there's plans with the Public Works Department, and I'm not sure where they're at with redesigning High Street in the intersection of Elm because of the sight lines, and it's a dangerous intersection, putting up lighting along the street, and I'm not sure where that is with Public Works, but we can look at that certainly if there's a problem with loading, yeah.
What I'd like to do is not mix Public Works, Public Safety, and zoning and separate those, so we're certainly aware of the issue you've raised, Mr. Stewart.
I was going to say, if we're going to make a zoning change, we'll make it...
But the zoning change wouldn't, wouldn't change the parking restrictions, so I want to separate those. We've, we've issued a contract for the work of Public Works. We're proceeding. We've met with the owner of the property. We certainly will address the concerns you have, but I want to separate that from zoning, zoning-related issues.
I think the loading problems on the west side will definitely be alleviated with the parking, and I think the parking problem that they have on the site will actually make tenants, you know, it'll, they'll be able to fill tenants, you know, into the spaces, so...
Okay, once again, so we don't have anyone here tonight to speak for or against this article?
Just Article 10 kind of goes hand in hand with this. 10 is the map change associated with Subdistrict A, so...
So it includes the mill into the map?
Right, the, the two mill parcels and the abutting parcels, which are the parking deck and over where the Converse parking area was.
Mm-hmm.
And the railroad right-of-way between the two.
Okay, so do we want to take those two together? So Article Nine and Article 10?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Article Nine and Article 10. Favorable action, excuse me.
Favorable action. So we have a motion. Favorable, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, favorable action on Articles Nine and 10?
Aye.
Okay. You want to talk to 11 and 12, too?
Article 11. What I discovered in really formulating this bylaw change was the downtown overlay map, the zoning map in total was recertified in 2013. The map prior to that was a 2009 zoning map. When it was recertified in 13, what I found was some of the parcels from the original downtown overlay had dropped off of the 13 map, so they were no longer included on the zoning map. And so this is really a correction to set the downtown overlay back to how it was originally approved at town meeting in 2009.
Okay, so somewhere along the line, the, the map was in error?
Yeah.
And this is really just simply an article to correct that error by...
Yes.
Re-adding those parcels?
I believe there were 15 parcels, and they were all, the overlay was intended to go either 500 feet from Main Street Center Line...
Yeah.
Towards Waverly, towards First and Second. Somewhere along the line, it, it did not go 500 feet anymore. So the 15 are really along that stretch, starting at Waverly Road up to, really across from St. Michael's Church.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Favorable action on Article 11?
We have a motion for favorable and a second. All those, I think Phil got the second and first, so we got Ms. Millie and Mr. Colagero. All those in favor, favorable action?
Aye.
Okay, I think you're all set, thank you. Are there any others?
I think there's one more.
Oh, there was?
I think there's an Article 12, which is a very similar article. The same area also was a correction needed for the historic Machine Shop Village District. Same thing, when that map was recertified in 13, a significant amount of parcels actually in this district were dropped off. So the historic district on today's map stops really along the Water Street corridor. It no longer goes all the way up to Library, Elm Street, all the way over to Claritin. It's, it's significantly incorrect. So again, this is a correction to that 13. I've compared it from '09 to 13, and I've confirmed with Joyce, there's been no article that has changed that map since '09 or 13.
Well, that was a great catch on your, your part to catch both of those, so thank you for that. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move favorable action on Article 12.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All, any further discussion? Thanks again, Gene. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we will insert into the warrant, or leave at the back of town meeting, the vote of the board, so, so members as they come into the meeting can pick that up since it will be in the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move into licensing.
Okay, we have a motion to move to licensing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now in licensing.
First on the agenda tonight is three one-day licenses for Mary Mac College, but I don't see them here. Everything is in order. One is April 30th, May 14th, May 7th for three individual receptions. Police fire building, all okay. Do we have a second?
Second. I just have a question. I did notice in Lieutenant Gray's response that there was some additional requirements that I don't think I'd seen before about invoicing and everything. Is that, was that normal requirements? Okay, it's just, it's just spelled out this time. Okay, perfect.
Different person at the...
Yeah, it's good, it's good to spell it out and make sure it's in there.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Anybody in the audience opposed to it? I mean, right?
No, I don't care. I mean, we don't, it's not like a, I didn't mean it like that. That came out totally wrong. Of course I care. I didn't mean it like that. I can't believe I did. I didn't mean it like that. I mean, it's not like a, a full public hearing, right? That's, totally didn't mean it like that. I do care quite a bit. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Second item on the agenda, there are two one-day, although on the agenda, it actually says one-day wine and malt licenses for Nathan Aldrich. It's actually, if you look at, in the packet, it's a full, all alcohol. Same with Deborah Engels at Smolak on May 15th. On the agenda, it's one-day wine, but it's actually all alcohol. Everything in the packet is correct for all alcohol.
Atlas devices.
Atlas devices, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, Deborah, oh, it's you for atlas devices.
That's fine.
Is there going to be any fireworks out?
No.
No fireworks at that event?
Mm-hmm. Standard conditions, no conditions. Police department, I mean, same as we usually see.
I'll make a motion to approve the licensing for May 10, 2015, from 4 to 9, and the licensing for May 15th from 3 to 8 at Smolak Farms for the two events stated in the...
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I have discussion.
Okay.
I have discussion only because, well, I know Mr. Smolak is here. There's still a lot of outstanding items.
Would you like a status report?
I would love a status report. Thank you.
I sent, I sent a report over on Friday.
We got those, yeah. I mean, we received that, thank you.
The, the tent is up, the, all the, the pedestals have been built for the speaker system. It's going to be installed this Wednesday, not Thursday, and the sound check will go after that, and, and it will fall exactly the way it's specified in the letter that I gave. The only, the only change in this is that the second one that would re, that would involve entertainment is the 21st, and I think I have it listed as the 17th on, on this, on this form.
Oh, we should zip it out even further.
Yeah. So, but, you know, we, in spite of the fact that we had all the snow, we're actually pretty much on time, which I'm kind of glad for.
Anybody else have any questions with the search? So I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Mr. Smolak, we'd love for you to come back in and give us an update when everything's up and running, if you could do that.
I will certainly give it by email, and if you want me to come back and do more, I will, for sure.
We'll do the emails, those yellow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Where am I at? Eli, Baylin of Green Stripes requests a one-day, and that is wine and malt, right?
Yes.
Yes, how are you?
Really just malt.
Just malt. Really just malt. You've been before us. Everything needs what needs to be met, rather. Do I have a motion or questions?
I'll move approval for a one-day, we still have to say wine and malt, in case somebody is a wine person there, for the road race on 1595 Osgood Street, May 3rd, 2015, from 10:00 to 2:00.
Mr. Mayor, a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay. Next before us is a common visual license, as well as an all-alcohol restaurant license and entertainment license for Lots of Eats that will be going into the old McClays Florist.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of North Andover Board of Selectmen. For the record, my name is Attorney Daniel A. Hayes, Jr., from the law firm Amoris Rossi and Hayes, representing Lots of Eats, Inc. With me this evening is Kanita Newton, a proposed manager, Inon Angauher, partner and the chef for the restaurant, and Kanita's husband, A. Pishat Newton, who's going to be, do whatever they tell him to do. Which is smart. It's an interesting story. Both Kanita and Inon came to this country between 10 to eight years ago, and both started in Maine and became friendly, and both started out as servers at restaurants and end up co-owning and owning their own restaurants, one in Portland and one in Bitterford. They heard of the opportunity down in North Andover McClays, came down and had a visit with Mr. DeAngelo, who's in the, is with us this evening, and they really loved the location. They both have a sterling reputation. The manager, they do have all-alcohol beverage license in Maine, never had a problem. I know they, I believe they cleared police fire and building in North Andover. They're a great success story. They've made substantial investment into the restaurant with the lease, a substantial lease, all-new equipment. They're TIP certified. They take pride in the restaurant, and they see this North Andover as a crowning achievement. They're young, and they're driven, and they're, they want to succeed and make North Andover the first Thai restaurant, I believe it's the first Thai restaurant in North Andover, and they feel it will be a great success, and soon to be members of the North Andover Merchant Association. I listen. And they're very, the great building, 48 seats, going to have a great menu, and they're also looking for an entertainment license for a radio, a very small bar. The bar's not a big part of it, it's just for couples coming in to eat or single people, and it's just not a happy hour atmosphere. It's an extension of their restaurant.
I actually like the hours, how it's like, kind of closes in between your lunch crowd and your dinner crowd. The only question that I have, in all honesty, is that while Kanita will be, is listed as manager, she's living in Bitterford, Maine. Who's going to be here every day?
Well, I did discuss that with Kanita, and they're looking to move to the area, her and her husband. They're in the process of looking to either rent. Bitterford's an hour and 10-minute drive, not crazy.
With two restaurants up that way.
Yeah, but she's, that's where he comes in. And this is the one, is a substantial investment for them, much more than their ones in Maine. So, they know that Kanita and Inon, one of the chefs, they have to be here for it to be a success, and they plan on being here full-time.
We take our liquor licenses very, very seriously in this community.
We know that.
And we take them away if necessary, too.
And I told them that, too.
How many years have they, have they been open in Maine?
I opened, I opened for five years for the restaurant, and my partner, she had, she'd been the co-owner for two years.
And how many of those years did you have a liquor license?
I have liquor license, and I opened the restaurant.
So, for five years, okay. Madam Chair, I move approval.
I asked about the radio. So, the radio is what, just for background music? There's no karaoke or anything, just for background music?
Yes.
You're going to have some flat screens, too?
I don't plan to do that.
You don't plan on flats, just the music, okay. Do we have any other questions?
No, but I'll give my speech either now or...
Please do.
Okay. We give this speech to everyone who gets a liquor license. We, as Selectman Watson said, we take our liquor licenses very, very seriously. It's a college town. Out-of-state licenses do not count if, what I'm trying to say is that we only can accept Massachusetts license. If you do accept an out-of-state license, you do it at your own peril. Again, the forged licenses are very, very good. There is a system where you can buy that can scan them and, with pretty good accuracy, can determine whether or not it is a forged driver's license. But, as I said to you, we have a college in town. A lot of the kids come from out-of-state. They bring these fake licenses, and so I'm cautioning you, we, the ABCC rules do not allow you to use that. You can take it, but if that person is not of age, you do it at your own peril. So, we do suggest that. We don't make it a condition of the license, but it's a very busy road. We've got kids in town. We really take it very seriously, so fair warning.
We did talk about the machine for the license scan, and Kanita's going to consider it. Yes, it is. It takes some liability.
I'm excited. I can't wait to go.
So, I just want to say, welcome to North Andover, and thank you for coming here and investing in that part of the town, because we really see that as an opportunity for growth up there. And Frank Terranova behind you and the McClay family has been, they've done a great job investing in that area and building off that little plaza, and providing some really nice businesses up there, so thank you for coming here.
And you've been one of the best contractors in town as well. So, DG Contracting, so I know it's going to be a beautiful space when it's completed.
I have a question to ask them. Does it smell beautiful in your building?
Yeah.
Flowers, but...
Great, so we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, welcome. Welcome. And I believe that is all. Can I have a motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
We are now out of licensing.
Okay. We are going to move to a public hearing. This is a continued hearing for National Grid. We talked, we had a teed it up last meeting, talking about a poll petition for Grape Pond Road, and I believe we have a representative from Verizon here to discuss this with us.
Dave Bouset from National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street here in North Andover. At the last meeting, there was some, an issue brought up about a pole on Middlesex Street. And just to let the board know, there's already a job, a work request, that's in motion to change that pole. With some research, we are going to change that pole. I had the, or had line foreman take a look at the pole, and he seemed assured that it was safe up until the point when we do change the pole to leave it the way it is. It's not, it's not a dangerous situation the way it is right now, so...
What is date certain?
Pardon me?
What is date certain that you will be changing the pole?
Date certain?
Yeah, what date?
What date? What's going to happen? Because we've heard that a couple times.
It's within a year.
For years.
Within a year.
Yeah. We're doing a, we're doing a changeover of 31 poles in the area. It's called feeder hardening. Something that National Grid contracted out to have done, and they'll be changing, as I said, 31 poles and upgrading the entire area. That's not something that we can kind of do for you like next week.
Can we get in writing that that pole is within those 31 poles to be changed? I mean, it's like this. I don't know how it's...
I've seen it.
It's crazy scary to even look at.
I've seen it, and I've, no disrespect, I've seen worse.
Okay.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it doesn't freak me out, though.
But I was also, I also had my foreman go out there to take a look at it, and he felt confident that it would be okay to leave it there the way it is until, until the project is put into place.
So, it's been added to a work order at some point within the next 12 months to have that replaced?
That's the timeframe that he told me that it would be done in, yes.
And what about we get it put up at the top of the list, perhaps, of that 31 pole work order? You said you're going to be replacing...
Top of the list.
Well, if you have 31, you're not going to do them all the same day.
Well, they'll probably set those poles and then do all the changeovers within a few weeks' time, once it gets into motion.
So, we don't know what date we're working on all of those 31 poles?
No, as I said, it's approximately one year.
Can I just interject one thing? I believe the assistant town manager had met with Verizon and has some correspondence, National Grid, I'm sorry, and has some correspondence from them, and I apologize, I introduced you as Verizon.
That's okay.
National Grid.
Subsequent to the board meeting last, two weeks ago, on Tuesday. That Wednesday, I met with Dave Gendel, and I know Dave's title has changed a few times, and Joe Morocco, who is the community coordinator for North Andover. I showed him photographs of the pole or whatever, and I did get this confirmation email back. A separate work request, 17367014, which was created last year to inspect pole number 44, which is the number of the pole in front of 60 Middlesex, has now been moved forward to scheduling. That order is to straighten pole number 144 and to set it deeper into the ground to prevent future issues.
That also means nothing to us.
No, it means something to me.
Well, it means that at least they have a work order.
Official work request, and it has been moved up to scheduling as opposed to just being in the queue.
It's a different work request than the request for the project.
Were you aware of this letter?
Yes, I was. But I was also told that we, by the foreman, that he felt confident that the pole was fine until this other project would go into motion. It would take some strings to be pulled, basically, to have that other one, the one that you referred to, 17...
We know which one you mean.
17367014. Is the work, is the work request number.
I'm sorry, just one more time, I got the 17. Okay.
And it has been moved to scheduling, which is, I know, a little further in the process.
Well, that sounds like that they're pushing it to have it, and I was unaware of that.
So, how can we get an update on that? Are you in regular communication?
I'm in regular communications with Mr. Morocco. Sure.
Scheduling means anywhere from, you know, one to, one to six weeks, usually. So, you would say probably somewhere into June, mid-June, by mid-June, something like that.
That it would be scheduled, not done?
That's done.
Okay. In scheduling, I've just had a hard time here.
That would mean that our part is done, as far as straightening the pole and moving our equipment, and if we need to place a new pole, moving our equipment to the new pole, if that ends up being the case, we'll do it, as opposed to straightening the pole, which is what the order was for.
When you say straightening the pole, what exactly does that mean?
It's like this.
Yeah.
Moving it to this.
But how do you get it to do that?
They have machines called, a machine called an auger that can dig, and they'll, and they hold it with the truck.
So, what I'm saying is you're not putting another pole across the street with...
With a guard wire.
With a guard wire to straighten it?
No, we would have to petition for that.
Okay.
To the town, yeah, to do that.
Fix this pole, not put another one next to it.
Okay, so they're going to redig it and then...
Resink it, yeah.
Kind of resink it, right, right.
Okay.
But, yeah. If this job goes through as scheduled, it would be that timeframe. If that ends up happening and going through. I mean, I can't tell you that that's going to happen, because the foreman was telling me today that it's, it's something that perhaps Mr. Gendel can get going. If it's on the schedule to be scheduled, to be done, then...
So, it sounds to me that there's a disconnect between what Mr. Santilli read and what you heard today. That's a yes? Okay, so does, so what you heard today from the foreman is different than what Red just read as it relates to where it stood? It's okay to say, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what we need to do is... So, we'll follow up with Mr. Gendel and, Gendel, and find out if he can verify that it's, that it's in the work order that identified it or whether or not. Because what you're hearing is from your foreman, is that it's been, that it's on a plan somewhere, but that it's not an immediate action item, because it's the interpretation of the engine, it's not going to follow over.
That's correct. That's what the foreman said. And what's going to end up happening is, you're going to, we're going to replace the pole twice. We'll replace it in six weeks, and then a year from now, or two months after that, we'll replace it again.
Why? Yeah, that's just silly. That's stupid.
Because it might, it might be a different class pole that needs to be put in.
So, why can't, I don't understand.
There's two different transactions happening within the shop. One is, one is writing the pole to make us comfortable, and the other one is the work order to, in essence, replace the pole. There's two different transactions happening here.
They do it at the same time, like, this is why utilities cost so much money, because it's, whatever. Move on, all right? As long as it gets fixed, that poor family, I drive by it every day, and it's the scariest thing to look at ever. It makes no sense to me either, but I get it.
And we have, Mr. Town Manager, we have a contact that we can work through you regularly, right?
Yes, and that contact was the person who attended the meeting Mr. Santilli was at, which he wasn't intended to attend that meeting. I think his point of attendance was to indicate that he was aware of the issue. But I want to make sure that what he's addressing is also what's being communicated, so we have one work planned to fix one pole, as opposed to two work plans to affect one pole.
Once it's assessed, it would be understood that it could only happen once, either it's straightened or it's replaced, but...
I'll follow up tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be good.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, so...
Close?
Should we wait for the...
So, do, we want to, what's the board's preference on moving forward?
Well, we move for a second, close the public hearing first.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Anybody else speaking? No, no, he's here for us.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so, now we have a, do we have a motion on this petition?
I move that we wait until the next meeting to have, to have a real answer to when this is going to get done.
So, what is the real answer that you're looking for?
The date they're going to do it.
Okay.
I certainly appreciate where you're on this. If I could recommend that, given the frequency at which National Grid appears before this body, and you'll have many bites of the apple relative to this pole, that given that this is a municipal project, that we're waiting to get in the ground on, I don't want to hold up that project. I respect your position on it, I just...
I asked you that at the last meeting.
Yeah, and it seems like we're getting closer, that I don't want to wait another minute. We're getting closer to that point at which I don't...
Hey, I'll withdraw my motion, but don't come back, tell them, don't come back here again without an answer, because nothing will get done, as far as I'm concerned.
We have the Green Street one, right, that was, is going, coming back at some point. So, as the manager said, we have a couple more bites of the apple for this one.
Do you have the Green Street petition?
Well, we heard it a few meetings ago, and we asked for that to be re-engineered so that it wouldn't, instead of putting a pole across the street to support the existing pole, was to maybe put a larger pole in.
That job is the job that is to replace the leaning pole. The petition that... Try to follow me on this. The petition for that Green Street stub pole to support a pole across the street that you, I'm not sure you tabled it? Okay. When that passes, or doesn't pass, if it passes, that would put the job that is the initial job that I was saying might be within a year in motion. So, we're waiting for that to happen.
It's for it to happen.
You mean, the pole that leans like this has to get done before the one that leans like this? That other, the Green Street pole is barely, it's barely leaning. It wasn't even put in right, it was a temporary fix.
I didn't look at that, but what I did do is see that that was in, holding up the job to, to, to replace the leaning pole we're talking about at 60 Middlesex.
They're not even, they're not even near one another.
I know they're not. The 31 poles are being replaced, and there's one pole that we needed a stub pole for on that particular job.
Yeah, that's, this is just not a good conversation.
So, I will, I will, we are going to have a, another meeting. I'll just leave it at that. So, I would still recommend we proceed on this, and I will make sure that we have a meeting, a, a meeting that clarifies our perspective.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, too, because obviously that library district is one of the gems in our community, and we'd really like to, you know, we don't want to keep popping poles up everywhere, or having poles leaning, almost touching the ground. We'd like to really get that squared away, so...
The solution, what we're trying to say is, the solution cannot be that you put another pole across the street to yank the other one. The solution is to put a good-sized pole and have everybody move their equipment. We realize that the utility companies don't like that. It's much easier to put a pole and a feeder line and make everything look like heck.
No disrespect, I understand what you're saying, putting a bigger pole in will help, but it's not, it's not going to deny the weight of the lines that are, it's not going to fix the weight of the lines. If you've got an angle like this, if you've got a pole here, a pole here, and a pole here, those wires want to go like this, no matter how big a pole you put there. And you need, you need to pull it back. You need to have an anchor on that. The weight of the wires is, is going to make you need a stub pole.
First of all, that pole wasn't put in correctly. It was done as a quick fix during a bad storm, and was never really put in correctly, but the weight, the weight of the wire is...
Which post is this?
The Green.
The Green Street.
So, should we not be talking about this, then?
But he's tying the two together, that's the problem. You know what, we just need to have another...
The poles initially on Green, on all the streets, initially, I mean, they were put in many, many, many years ago with less... Okay, maybe not that one. I don't know when that neighborhood was built.
Can I make a motion?
I don't know when it was built. But I'm just saying that most poles were put in, in the 1930s and 40s, when neighborhoods in 50s and 60s, with a lot less on the poles.
That makes sense.
And we didn't need a stub pole at that time, or an anchor on the side of the poles. You know, now that telephone, especially telephone, not to point them out, but they have a lot, they have a lot of heavy equipment, that with, including with fiber optic that's showing up in the new technology of today, so...
Okay, so, we have two different issues here. Okay, so we have two different issues here. One of them, the petition in front of us is for Grapevine Road, and then we have what appears to be going to be a much more detailed discussion on the Middlesex and Green Street and the replacement of the poles there. So I'd like to try to either take action or no action on the petition in front of us tonight, and then we will have to have the National Grid come back and discuss, because they're going to have to come back because they want to do something with that Green Street pole, so that is still on the table, so we need to come back.
But this is for the pump station, right?
Yes, the one in front of us is for Grapevine Road.
So I say we need to move approval.
Could you tell me a trick?
There is no motion on the floor right now.
All right, did I move approval for the National Grid and Verizon New England Joint Pole Petition Number 16210170 Grapevine Road is presented.
Okay, were there some conditions that we needed to include?
Can you put a condition on it?
Just the requirements that had been placed in from the very beginning by the staff engineer of the DPW.
There was our own engineer?
You were aware of those. Yes, you were aware of those, yes.
Condition upon the correspondence from DPW staff engineer?
Yes, added.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Done.
Done a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of this people petition?
Aye.
All opposed?
You ayeed? Give them one more chance.
So we're unanimous. All right, thank you, Dave, coming in.
They're going to send somebody else.
I believe, so we still need to approve an easement. So I don't think we need to do this, though, Dave. I think we need to approve the, I don't think, we need to approve the easement for Mass Electric on Grapevine Road.
Move that the board has selected and approved and signed the grant of easement to Mass Electric for 1650th Grapevine Road is presented for the pump station.
We have a motion from Ms. Watson, a second from Mr. Callagero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please don't leave, we have to sign that before you leave, so make sure we all sign that easement before you go. Okay, we are out of the public hearing. We're moving on to old business. We are going to get an update on the BioSolids project.
Sure, as it promised, with the draft of the amended community agreement with GLSD, we're moving forward with, I entered our contract last week with environmental partners, contracting firm, engineering firm who has done work for the town in the past to complete the environmental impact study. So the impact that the BioSolids project, the food organics project that's proposed that the GLSD would have in the community, things like smell, noise, truck traffic and those, those kinds of items, I would expect that the company will be able to report back with the draft report by mid-May to this board. I've also made the GLSD aware of the fact that our contractor is proceeding with this study. It'd be my hope that if the project does move forward at the GLSD, that the GLSD would agree to vote to reimburse the town the cost of the study, which is approximately $10,000. And the committee again will, I mean, the company will report back to this board, and then you'll provide some additional feedback, and ultimately issue a final report with some recommendations or some information relative to the project, done independently from the engineers that are working for the GLSD, back to this board, so the board will understand what the impact on the neighborhood will be.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager, for putting this together. I think at least it gives us something that we can, you know, present to neighbors or abutters that have concerns about this, that at least we've done our part to see what this new process, I mean, we're the first in Massachusetts, we need to know what it's all about.
Trailblazers.
Trailblazers, could be a very good thing.
I hope.
And we also have a tour of GLSD coming up on May 1st.
Yeah, that's Thursday, right?
It's Friday.
What time?
10 o'clock.
It's Friday, man.
Yeah, next Friday, May 1st, May Day.
This Friday.
It's this Friday.
Oh, this Friday.
Yeah, that's why I was like, what day?
It would have hit me with my calendar.
I hit their stair with ice cream.
Oh, yeah? I mean, what time?
Past from the past.
Okay.
I don't know if I could...
So any, any other old business at this point? New business, any new business?
No.
Okay. Public comment, do we have, we have a public comment. Please come up and, oh, no, you're not, oh.
Oh, no, public comment.
Yeah, it's excited there for a minute.
I know.
Thank you for coming in. Okay, so no public comment.
You got anything?
We will go to the town manager report, ask the manager.
The gentleman was with the company that we hired to do the project.
Oh, I love so.
So just in case there was anything that was...
I'm glad, I know that face.
Yep, he actually is the north end of Arizona.
Yes, okay.
So he's not the principal of the company, but he's one of the engineers that'll be working on the project. And he was closest to drive, right? So that was, I didn't have any ask the manager questions that I am aware of, although I would say that we've embarked on a couple of new, it's always great to get a new technology person in town, they come with interesting and exciting ideas, so he's making an aggressive effort to take a number of steps. We've secured a new domain name, one that's consistent with how the government convention, which is north end of MA.gov. We haven't yet implemented, but we've secured that domain name, and at some point in the future we'll be rolling that out to be more consistent with how communities normally do things. We've embarked on an internal initiative that I'll call 2016 Followers by 2016, and it's our goal to increase our followers by, our goal to increase the number of Twitter followers. I just thought of that today, Laurie, I had it on, it was pretty good.
I should probably follow it up.
Yeah. Goal is to increase, we started at about 700 or 800 followers, or had 700, 800 followers about a year ago, that's, that's close to 1130 now, might be a little higher than that, and with the help of our new, with Chris, who's really given us some ideas on how to increase exposure and increase followers, our goal is to cross the 2,000 mark sometime during 2016.
We can share things on our Facebook pages, we can share that link. We'll get you to 2016, Laurie.
We'll get there. We're doing similar things like that, so some pretty interesting initiatives going on in town. And some folks in town may have seen that there's some work happening at the Brad Street School, they're doing the preliminary work necessary to eventually do the demolition, which I would expect to happen hopefully in the next four to six weeks.
Well, we have plenty of notice in regards to that.
In what way?
Well, will they let us know when the demolition, the day of demolition?
Sure. They will, demolition permit hasn't been issued yet, but they're doing the preliminary work to remove material in advance, where we'll be aware that when the demolition permit...
I am nervous, there might be some protesters, but I'll be happy to go, boom! Yay!
I don't think it'll be explosives, hopefully.
I'm excited for the new day.
We'll avoid the explosives as a demolition method.
Is there any truth to the rumor they're going to have a fundraiser, so much of rock for kids to plug through the windows?
Oh, that's funny, that's not a bad idea. That is actually something that people would...
Teaching them to rock.
They did encourage that.
A kid has the courage to break a window, you know.
I'm excited for it to go away.
I was asked one, one question, and I forgot about this question. I was asked the question of whether or not there seems to be some speculation on the new McAvoy fields. If the middle of the three fields, because of the way it's been constructed, if the playground equipment adjacent to it will need to be moved if there was a mistake made. So there seems to be some conversation that the play structures are fairly close to the softball diamond. That was by design and with agreement of the Fields Committee, that those fields were really to be made for younger kids so that the balls wouldn't be flying into the playground. So for those who believe that there was an error in the design and or construction, and that we'll be moving the playground equipment, that's not true.
Great, when is it opening?
Not till September after the field.
Oh, it is.
It takes about a year for us to, we need a full year after we plant the field.
I may have misled some people, though, recently.
Did you mislead Don?
No, I don't know, I, I don't know why I felt it was going to be sooner when I knew it was September, but...
Yeah, we'll put that back out there and just repeat it.
I've had a rough couple of weeks, all right.
The Booster Club's aware of that, they're already scheduling their games elsewhere.
Well, Don, see, it's him.
I'll get over.
I had a question up at the Stevens Estate. I noticed as you're coming up the driveway, there was some trees that had been cleared off to the left of the driveway. What was the purpose of that?
So that was part of the clearing project. In fact, you may remember Jennifer Hughes came before the group and talked about the fact that they thin out some of the trees in certain areas. The thinning out actually promotes further growth of trees. So it's come before the board in two different occasions where they've entered into, there was a smaller grant associated with it, several thousand dollars to bring in a company to thin that out. I know it sort of looks like it's parking.
Yeah.
And so I assume that's where the question's at, right? At this point, that certainly wasn't the intention of clearing the space, but not unlike Wire Hill, there's some clearing that happened over there. There's a few places around town where we're taking trees out, or the owners of the property are taking the tree out, because it promotes a further growth of the trees that are embedded inside the forests, yeah.
Wire Hill actually looks really good. With it cleared out, you can really see the whole landscape and the old stone wall and everything, and really, it really looks good the way they've cleared it. I know it will want to work.
Enhanced, gosh. There's a lot of dog poop down there.
It wasn't too bad, I was up there the other day, it wasn't too bad.
Give it a month.
Okay. Any updates on the facilities master plan?
Do you want to turn that over to the...
As you are aware, we have three projects ongoing in the facilities master plan, and they are amazingly at all different parts of the spectrum. The first one is the School Department Administration Building. That will be completed by the end of May. Did, oh, I thought you had a question already.
When you get through.
It will be completed by the end of May. Right now, all the interior finished, finished work is being done. If you've gone by there, they've now graded the site. They will be putting in the granite curbing tomorrow, and over the next few days into next week, you will see the sidewalks being done, as well as the binder and the asphalt parking lot, et cetera, and all of the outside work. Yes, ma'am?
I was just going to say, do we have a move-in date for them?
A move-in date will be throughout the month of June, but definitely by the...
I know, it's amazing.
By the third week of June, the new superintendent will never visit, never be in the office at 1600 Osgood Street. She will go, she will go directly to 566 Main Street.
That's fantastic. Good job, Ray.
An open house of sorts before the building is formally, you know, completely occupied once the furniture gets in place, and they don't, people don't have to sort of navigate around, you know.
One question, Ray. I go by it every day, okay, and they filled in most of the parking lot.
Yeah.
It's a big drop-off. What are they going to do, just leave it?
That's a drainage. It's actually where the drainage goes, it's an 18-foot drop so that the drainage flows there, and there will be a retainage place, well, not really, but it'll just be a drainage.
I seen by the stuff going in there that it will hold up, it's really...
Yeah, the fence will be down over the next week, too, so you'll start seeing the loom being brought in, bushes being put up, et cetera, so the building will actually come into better view, if that's the right term. It won't look like a bunker with all the snow around it, et cetera. Second project is the fire station project. That is progressing and is scheduled to be completed in October. All the floors have been poured, all the slabs, if you've gone by it, which Don tells me he goes and checks it every morning. The exterior framing of the second floor has been done. They started the interior framing of the second floor today, and they will, you'll also start seeing the framing of the first floor. So that will start taking, it's starting to look like a building. We are diligently working with the Mass DOT on the traffic light and the curb cut, and we're working diligently on that part of the project, is all I'll say.
And all the cars that are staying at work is from that place.
That's correct. We did that on purpose because no parking, no parking on Prescott Street, et cetera. The third project is the renovation of the fire station and making this into a consolidated town hall, a one-building town hall. At your last meeting, the architect was here to review with you different options for the facade and the front entry seating area, whichever you would call. We are holding our public meeting on that on Thursday, May 14th, at 6:00 PM in this room. We will again announce it at your May 11th meeting, and we'll get notices, we'll post it on our website, we'll get, not the Andover Cable to post it, et cetera, and it'll be on our calendar.
Will you tweet it out?
To the merchants, sure.
I think the downtown...
Merchants Association or...
Well, I think all of them, but particularly the downtown merchants, it'd be interesting...
Well, again, it's not, it's not a public hearing, so we're not issuing an abutters list, so it's a public meeting, similar, similar to the presentation that was done at the last selectmen's meeting.
The architects will really, really be, will be an open-ended session, so the architects will roll out the three, probably two will eliminate the more obvious elimination, generate feedback in a very open-ended setting so that that feedback can be brought back to the board. You'll hear from the architect what the feedback was, again, more bullet points, so you'll take your first original sentiments plus that feedback and be asked to make a final decision about the final last.
Downtown, the Main Street merchants, it'd be nice that they were informed.
Just a flyer was handed up to them.
We'll be on, North Andover Cam is a bulletin, we'll be on our social media accounts, our website, we'll try to see if we can televise the meeting itself.
I was just going to say that, you think Cam can actually...
So there'll be a lot of opportunity, and we can, we'll post something in town hall as well so people can see it, and we'll do whatever, you know.
At least record a data, right.
Meeting for our CIP, we will begin our work on the construction documents, similar to the fire station sequence. We will go out to bid end of August, beginning of September. If the fire department moves into its new residence in November, we should be able to begin construction end of November, beginning of December, roughly a nine to 10-month period. So by the fall of 2016, right, fall of 2016, those three projects will be, have been completed, and then...
In the gym, which is the first. So there'll be four.
Right, so I was going to say, and then fall, and the Kittrish Gym was also already, I've got the last payment requisition today, as a matter of fact, on the Kittrish Gym. And again, favorable vote at town meeting, we will then start the design, the selection of the OPM and architect for the Public Works Project. So we will have, Kittrish Gym is definitely completed, three ongoing, we'll start a fourth probably in July also.
So Ray, this may be premature, this question, but during the construction, there's obviously going to be some disruption here in town hall for the various, for the public coming in to pay their bills, or coming to town clerk.
Actually, he's absolutely correct, we're, we're working on the logistics of all that.
It's likely to be completing the fire station side, creating openings, allowing